Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
McComber.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Seeliger.
Here.
Zamfordino.
Here.
The minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting that was held on October 16th, 2017, were distributed to council prior to this meeting. Are there any amendments or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the minutes are approved as presented. Kay, is there correspondence this evening?
Yes, distributed to you prior to the meeting is a listing of budget transfers to be made for the month of November. Those transfers need your approval.
Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the budget transfers are approved as presented.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. I'm told that we do have a couple of special recognitions, so at this point, I would ask Mr. Edwards, Mayor Edwards.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. I do indeed have two presentations to make this evening. The first one is for downtown Bowling Green, and I'm going to ask Mary Henkelman to please come forward, our wonderful, outstanding Executive Director of Downtown Bowling Green. Or you like to prefer to be called Managing Director, is that right? Okay. Thank you. Well, on November 25th, we'll be celebrating a very special day. We do it each year, but it's Small Business Saturday. And I really appreciate all the statistics here that you have helped me do and the staff here incorporate into this proclamation, because it starts by saying, whereas our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States that represent more than 99% of American employer firms, create more than 66% of net new jobs, and generate 46% of private gross domestic product, as well as 54% of all U.S. sales. Now, don't hold me to, you know, committing those statistics to memory, but they're impressive, let's put it that way. Can I just stop with that? Because they are. They tell a great story, because small businesses employ over 48% of the working population in the United States. There are more statistics in here, and I won't, they are impressive, and they tell a great, great story. And Bowling Green supports our local businesses, who create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. It also has another name, doesn't it? Is it, people are in the, in the black, then? Is that the?
No, it's Friday.
No, Wednesday's Black Friday, right?
Friday before.
Oh, okay.
Saturday.
Okay. Very good. Now, therefore, I, Richard A. Edwards, Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio Duke, hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday. Mary Henkelman, congratulations to you and your board, and thank you so much for all that you're doing, especially in our, helping to maintain our historic, we like to say, vibrant downtown Bowling Green. We appreciate it very much, all of you. Yes, you do have a moment, more than a moment.
Thank you, everybody. I would like to pass these materials to our council, to let them know that we are working hard to promote our downtown, not only on Shop Small Business Saturday, but for the whole holiday, holidays season. These are some material, marketing materials that we've put together. I'd like you to look through them, see things that we've got going on, not just events in the downtown, but also our downtown dollars. I want to remind everybody to please take advantage of downtown dollars. 68 cents of every dollar spent with those downtown dollars stays local in our, in our economy, versus if you just spend money down at one of the big box stores, we drop down to 43 cents, and then when you buy online, nothing stays local. So it's so important to our downtown merchants. Those merchants are so supportive of our community with all they do. They're constantly donating to this event and that event. They do so many things that you don't even realize. Until I took this job, I didn't realize what our downtown merchants do. They're wonderful people, they make a huge investment in our downtown, and it vibrates out to the whole city. So please, 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 help them during this holiday season and support them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. I'm going to ask Wendy Chambers if she would please come forward here. Not only, as we've all heard and it's been recognized, of course, that small businesses play such, play such a huge role in adding vibrancy to our, our local economy, and just important cog in our wheel of economic health, but also, it contributes substantially to our profile as, as a community overall. And we know that we have a large industrial base here, and I know Sue Clark is here, because she, yep, there she is back there, and sitting next to Superintendent Scroochy, and we have somewhere between probably around 4,500 or so in our industrial sector. All of this contributes to our overall health and vitality as a, as a community. And this has been recognized in a very special way, not only, not just our, our impact on our local economy, but what we're doing as a community. And we've now been recognized, if you've all had a chance, I hope, to see the November issue of Ohio Magazine, because right on the front cover, Bowling Green, Ohio, and there's some nice coverage in there, too. And especially Kristin Ottley, you should be super pleased there, because the focus is on the Simpson Garden Park there in some of those photos. And we know that the, the editorial staff of the, of Ohio Magazine were really taken quite by, by the Simpson Garden Park there. So, this is called Best Hometown Year. Wow. This is the second time in 10 years? Yeah. And I'm going to let you expand upon this a little bit, but here's a proclamation. Whereas Ohio Magazine annually recognizes the best hometowns in Ohio based on values of community spirit, education, entertainment, health and safety, business environment, cultural, culture and heritage, and whereas the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, Bowling Green State University, and the Bowling Green Convention and Visitors Bureau are proud to once again be named Best Hometown by the Ohio Magazine for 2017, 2018. And I believe you have some of your board members here, too, don't you? They should be standing, just so you can stand and just where you're seated there, please, the board, Wendy's board members there, please stand. I'm not going to ask you to come forward, but, but anyway, you should take, she can't take all the credit here, so. Whereas the city, BGSU, the community, and the organizations at Four Corners Center are to be commended for showcasing all that our wonderful city has to offer to representatives of, of the Ohio Magazine to be considered for this recognition. And whereas Ohio Magazine cited Bowling Green's historic downtown, the vibrant college town atmosphere, strong sense of community, and shared vision for the future as key reasons for being chosen. Now, therefore, I, Richard A. Edwards, Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, do hereby declare 2018, so we're jumping ahead here a little bit, Best Hometown Year, and commend the Bowling Green Convention and Visitors Bureau, city staff, Bowling Green State University, and all those who tirelessly promoted this community for making Bowling Green a great place to live, work, play, and visit. So Wendy, and your board, congratulations.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
I am ecstatic that Bowling Green, Ohio, the place I live, work, and love, was chosen again for the Best Hometown. This is our second time. Back in 2007, 2008, we were chosen as one of, it was only the second year that they chose the Best Hometowns by Ohio Magazine. You can see on the wall, it was also the only year that they did the paintings. So we're always going to have that in our history, that we were the only year they did that, and that's kind of a nice addition that we had that year. But to get the honor again, I went through all of the different categories that the mayor had mentioned, and I could not believe all the things that we've accomplished in the last 10 years. We're so progressive in Bowling Green, Ohio. I'm so proud of this community, and I, I want to thank my board members, I want to thank the City of Bowling Green, all, all the people that helped when Ohio Magazine came out to visit our community, from our parks, to the university, to the downtown. They came to the farmer's market, they talked with the Kraft family and all their small businesses, and so I'm very proud of all the people that came through for us when they came to visit. And they also came back another time, as you can see, to get some photos, and we had the Dee Beck family as our models, that the Simpson Garden Park is inside the magazine. And of course, as you can see, Eden Boutique was lucky enough to be on the cover, as well as Mimi Yoon, as one of the models. So if you haven't gotten a copy of the magazine, they're available at Ben Franklin, and they're also available at the Four Corners Center, but very honored. This is the first of three times we'll be in the magazine this year. We'll be in the Best of Edition in January, as well as in the July Edition, which is the summer fun issue. So more stories, more photos, more highlights of Bowling Green, Ohio to come this year with this honor with the Best Hometown. Now, we're celebrating on November 18th, immediately following the parade, we will have a reception, but during the parade, we're actually going to stop at the Four Corners, and Jim Vickers from Ohio Magazine will be presenting both the mayor and President Maisy with the award. So we're excited about having that during the holiday parade. Then I invite all of you to come and join us to celebrate at noon, then, in the Four Corners Center. So we're excited. Way to go, Bowling Green.
Thank you very much, Wendy. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you may have this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Wendy, and everyone that, that contributed to this award. Certainly, we appreciate very much all the things that you do every day to make Bowling Green the place that it is. At this point, we open up the floor to lobby visitation for those who have signed in with the clerk prior to this meeting. We do ask that, if you will be addressing council, that you begin by approaching the microphone and clearly stating your name and address for the record. So Kay, who do we have signed up this evening?
Alex Bishop.
Hi, I'm Alex Bishop. I live at 140 and 1/2, Mannville Avenue. So today, I wanted to just voice my opinion about the charter amendment that we can all vote on tomorrow. I'm not from Bowling Green originally, I'm from Mansfield, Ohio, and I moved here. So this is my second home, and this issue is really important to me. When I found out about it last year, I didn't really care, because I didn't know what that meant. Then I went home for the summer, and in Mansfield, the Rover Pipeline went through, like, a mile from my house. So that whole summer, I got to watch the construction, the cutting down of like thousands of trees, going right next to people's houses, and they spilled like 50,000 gallons of drilling fluid into wetlands by my house and destroyed it, and like, that affects wildlife, that affects like everything going on in your community. And I like, wanted a chance to come here and talk about it, because this is my second home, and like, I don't want to see the same thing happen here with like environmental issues. So everybody here could just consider the future of like our environment and Bowling Green as a city and a community, and what the detriment could be with pipelines and different infrastructure coming through. I'd be really appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Holmes.
Hi, Brad Holmes, 327 East Evers A. So Bowling Green Charter Amendment has obviously gone through quite a few hoops over the last nine or so months. It feels really good to be standing here today, the day before Election Day, where this surely important issue will be voted on by Bowling Green voters. I'm incredibly optimistic about this, and just very happy that we made it this far as well, considering all the difficulties we've gone through. The Bowling Green Charter Amendment, of course, has been on the receiving end of some criticism and controversy, some of which surely was not substantiated. This legislation, of course, is an attempt to empower city officials and our community to take a legal stance against unwanted fossil fuel infrastructure on BG property. And based on the assumption that our city officials do indeed wish to keep such projects off of Bowling Green property, as we've seen with Mayor Edwards' numerous statements in which he explains, he doesn't wish to see more and more and more pipelines come through the area, especially those that are potentially threatening to our community. We're very confident that if passed, this amendment would strengthen the city's ability to act on these general concerns, and assuming that most of the city officials fall in the same general field of not really caring to see all these damaging projects come through our town, we really, well, to come through our town and our backyards, more specifically, we really find this issue to be very important. And as our city attorney, Marsh, has been mentioning in recent statements regarding the legal proceedings that have taken place in the last month, between the Nexus Company's attempts to claim ownership over the BG city-owned property, which, you know, is a bit north of the main part of town, this is an issue that generally gets solved at the federal level. Their eminent domain claims, legal clauses of federal preemption over local desires. This is something that we all certainly should be aware of that happens. And as Alex alluded to, communities truly kind of are at the receiving end, the negative receiving end of these projects, and oftentimes are quite frankly powerless in these situations. But is this something that we ought to be entirely content with? Personally, as a young person who studies environmental policy, sustainability, renewable development into our future, I am not okay with that as being a, you know, final end-all-be-all. We absolutely cannot allow a lack of local initiative or political action to keep us from fighting back against this surely national issue. There's a, there's a few federal acts that have been installed over the course of the last multiple decades that I just care to throw out really quickly. The 1938 Natural Gas Act was one of the earliest things we saw that had started the ball rolling with this federal-sized issue. It basically, it basically allowed the Federal Power Commission the authority to oversee these interstate pipelines, facilities, and pricing. Moving forward, the 1978 version of that act, it removed pricing controls by 1985. It caused inter- and intrastate pipelines to be regulated on a similar basis. Moving on to 1992, the Energy Policy Act minimized restrictions on oil and gas imports, poured more research and development funding for domestic gas, provided energy tax incentives. 2005, the Energy Policy Act, it reviews and streamlines natural oil and gas leasing and permitting, and permitting processes. It promoted more oil and gas subsidies. It even provided this Halliburton loophole, which exempts the hydraulic fracturing from existing within federal environmental law. 2007, the Energy Independence and Security Act, it continued these oil and gas tax subsidies. Furthermore, the 2009 American Recovery and Reinvestment Act further continued oil and gas tax subsidies. Truly, this is a federal issue, and it's something that, it's a pretty big system that's going on here. And again, all at the whim of local communities who hardly have much of a say. So with these acts in mind, it is no secret that, as a local community, we are a bit overpowered, and I'm here to say, we are aware of that. But as a community who has been framed as one of the most vocal about these issues and about our concerns, I truly believe that we owe it to ourselves to vote yes on this charter amendment. And I'm, you guys have heard me say this before in this very room, so I might be just be ringing in and out of your ears at this point. But, you know, it's just a message of solidarity between now and the last nine months we've spent doing all the hard work we've done. Lastly, I want to formally request, if possible, whether it's through, I don't know, a council motion or something, for a lobby visitation extension to take place at the end of the council meeting tonight. You know, it kind of used to be structured to the point where lobby visitation took place a little bit later in the meeting. I'm not sure the exact process by which this could be requested or approved, but considering that it is the night before Election Day, and for the sake of allowing any community members present or citizens to raise any additional comments, questions, or concerns that they have regarding any conversations that took place during the course of this meeting, I find it would be an excellent opportunity for us, us democratic citizens to speak our minds on things that may have brought up, been brought up, that we want to, you know, either contest or raise a question about. So yeah, like I said, I'm not sure of the exact process, how that would work, but this is my formal request to establish that for at least this meeting for tonight. Again, especially since tomorrow is voting day, and there's quite a few relevant issues that BG citizens will be voting on tomorrow.
Thanks, Brad. As a president of the city council, I do work with, with administration to set the agenda.
Okay.
And I would tell you that we, we obviously have opened the floor to lobby visitation. We'd be happy to take counsel from all those that are interested in speaking to city council during this period of time. I do not expect that we will extend lobby visitation past the end of our meeting, but thank you.
Understood. Is there any general form, way in which community members could request that, perhaps, or at least changing in the future?
You could submit that request to the clerk of city council, and we'll take it under advisement.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ross Martin.
My name is Ross Martin. I live on 224 Troop Avenue, and I am also here to speak about the BG city charter amendment. And I'm going to start off where it always seems to start off at, with money. So it's my understanding that Nexus stands to give us $80,000 for the right to use BG city land. Am I correct in that ballparking? Okay.
A judge.
Judges will decide what they give us. Okay, so we don't have a dollar. Say, they give us a million dollars. It's a lot of money. There are 30,000 residents of BG. So if you take that million dollars and you assign it to each person in BG, it amounts to about $33 per person. So if you went up to someone and asked them, "We would like to endanger your water for $33.33," what would you tell them? What would anyone tell them? I don't think many people would give you a yes to that. Money aside, I, as I'm sure most of you are, run your lives on principle, and I think that this is a matter of principle more than it is pragmatics. What, when we saw that, that Waterville passed a charter amendment similar to ours, we were inspired by that. We were inspired to take action. We were inspired to do something about it, because we saw people that went before us do so. And I think that that is very, very important to our situation now, because we stand to make the same sort of legislation. And when we do that, it sends a message. It doesn't send a message to Nexus, it doesn't send a message to the people that live in BG, it sends a message to everyone around us. And just as Waterville inspired us to do something, to take action, to engage in democracy, we also have that chance to inspire others, and that's such a powerful thing. The, the opportunity to inspire does not come along all the time, and when it does, you have to take it. So what we stand to gain here is we expand your rights to enforce the health and safety of our city, and we also stand to inspire people to take part in democracy and to defend the environment, which are two of the most noble things that I think mankind knows. So with that, I urge all of you to vote yes, and I urge city council to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you all for those comments. We move on, on our agenda to our official reports. Mr. Mayor.
I really have, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled, I have no official, formal report tonight, but I'd be happy to respond to any questions that you, you might have. Before you ask if you wish to ask any, any questions and so forth, I just wanted to address the, our young friends here from the university. As someone who has long been involved in environmental issues and movements and so forth, I understand your passion. I understand it totally. And I commend you for your passion, your desire to see changes and so forth. And Brad, you correctly identified, I was born in 1939, so you've mentioned 1938, so I can tell you, I'm 78 years old, that would have been 79 years ago that this all started. That's how long we've been living with this. And you are correct, absolutely correct, that municipalities have been virtually powerless in terms of what they can do to prevent pipelines from coming into the community. One of the things that's really bothered me, though, about this, are some of the very basic facts in that, because this is not, unlike Waterville, unlike Oberlin, these are all communities I know well, unlike Green City, I've talked with that mayor, you've heard me say that I've talked with that mayor, that pipeline is going to come right up through the gut of the City of Green, which stretches from the south of Akron to the north of Canton, has three zip codes there. And I understand, and I, I really feel for those people there, because it's, it's going to interfere with some parks, it's going to interfere with some other city facilities, it's, it's going to interfere with the, the wonderful industrial park they have there, immediately adjacent to the Akron-Canton Airport. That is a huge, huge thing. And I really feel for those people there, because they've not been able to move anything along, and they've expended all kinds of dollars on this. I've talked with the folks in Oberlin, it's a community that I, is close to my heart, quite frankly, and I won't get into all the reasons why and so forth, but it's a, it's a very distinctive community, and they've always been super environmentally conscious in that. And, and it does cut into a little bit in the northeast quadrant of that city there. The city council has taken action, and they did the same thing that Bowling Green City Council has done, said, "No, we're not going to be a party to it," and that's, it's, we're all in the hands of the judge, a federal judge in the Akron Federal District Court. I certainly have talked to the people in Waterville, and that, again, they're, they're hoping that the only thing that, that the amendment will do is we'll empower them to say no to a construction permit. And we know what will happen, unfortunately, as soon as that decision is rendered, it will go in immediately into a court, because it is cutting, again, right into a major portion of that community. Where we've been different in Bowling Green, I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or otherwise in that, is that this pipeline, as much as a lot of us have, you know, some, some very ambiguous feelings about it, and we're, we're torn by it and so forth, is coming, it's 254-mile path pipeline. The City of Bowling Green, because it does not really come into our city at all, has very little to do in which to say. Council has already taken a position on the 28 acres that is virtually, it follows the Toledo Edison line going across there, the high-tension lines and so forth. It comes within about 700 feet of our reservoir, and as you well know, this has troubled me, this has concerned me a great deal, and I've relied heavily on independent, these, I don't care what you call these people, they're all well-respected scientists, geologists, hydrologists, and so forth, all have their own individual opinions, and they were right here. And you heard them all say, including Andrew Kerr, who's, that I've tried to help in, in different ways. And even Andrew said, you know, unfortunately, going back to 1938, there's very little that you can do. So this pipeline is not interfering with our city, coming into our city limits in any way, shape, or form. It's a Middleton township, it's more of a Middleton township issue than it is. It's more of a Middleton Township issue than it is the city of Bowling Green, even though, even though it's coming within a distance of our water, of our reservoir, and about 1,700 feet of our water treatment plant, I would prefer, you would prefer, all of us would prefer, would be some distance more removed than that. And so it's been very frustrating for all of us that do care, like you do, about our environment, and are trying to do everything we possibly can. And I know some of you have blown off the EPA, and that's unfortunate because I am so pleased, and I'll say it time and time again, what the Ohio EPA has been standing up, especially on the Rover Pipeline issue there, there's been a total mess down there. I think the last check, the fines amounted to over $4 million, and it's tied up in further litigation and so forth. So obviously, we do not want what's happened down in southeastern Ohio to happen here. And that's why the EPA is playing a very, very critical role in this. I have confidence in them, I've had others listen to the director there, and their senior staff and so forth, and I really think that when that day's going to come, I'm just not sure how long that's going to take to get across from southeastern Ohio and western Pennsylvania and that. I prefer that it would not even be coming across, believe me. But we don't know when that time is going to be, but we have been assured that we will be given prompt and adequate notification and so forth. And I know that the Ohio EPA, I know that FERC itself are going to have people right here checking every step of that pipeline, especially as it goes across the Maumee River. And I know it's going to be difficult to pull off, but I know that there will be some independent assessments made as best they possibly can with that, too. It's an engineering challenge, they claim that they can handle that. I even had a letter today that says that they understand, Mayor, all of your concerns and so forth, and we were going to, you know, make sure that's absolutely done right. Well, we have to make, you know, we have to be double and triple reassured that it's going to be done right, and we're going to be watching that. And I know some of you don't like to, you've mocked me a little bit because I've said we're watching. I mean, in a very serious way, with the Ohio EPA, with FERC, with other groups, independents and so forth, we will be more than watching, we'll be monitoring and assessing exactly what is done there. So I really didn't plan to make any statements tonight. And I just hope that you understand that a lot of us have taken this very, very seriously. The amount of time and effort that have gone into this, we've heard you time and again. And it is troubling. And we want to do the best we possibly can under these circumstances because you've correctly identified the role of federal law. In fact, I keep asking the question, and no one has been able to tell me, maybe you can, because you've done some research yourself there in the history of it all. But I know of no community in these United States that is not immediately threatened by its city limits, where there's been effective action taken to stop a pipeline. I like to think that maybe some of those communities, somewhere in the history, that have been threatened directly, as I've identified, by Waterville and Oberlin and Green City, where it's really cutting into the city limits and coming right into the heart of those communities, that maybe somewhere in the history there has been some changes made and so forth. But I don't know of any, and that's kind of sad for all of us because we know that these pipelines can be damaging at times. They can also work effectively if they're done correctly, as we've, you know, I know, the university knows, because since the mid-1950s, we've been serviced by a highly, high-energy gas line, natural gas line there, it goes right down Mercer Road, and it's monitored very, very closely since about 1954, 55, somewhere in there. It feeds the university and this city. And all we can do is hope that, you know, all the safety precautions are taken. And with that, I'm just going to stop. I don't want you, regardless of how this vote's going to come out tomorrow, I, as someone who has worked with university students for most of my professional life, has taught classes and so forth, and have tried to get some understanding of basic government in that process, both at the federal level, at the state level, and here at the end of my career at the local level. I never thought I would be serving this kind of role before. I had no plans to do so, enjoying retirement, as Mrs. Edwards would clearly tell you. And so this has not been easy in many respects, and I take it all very, very seriously. I commend you for your passion, for the sincerity, what you do, what you believe. And again, I hope you will, in a sense, keep that flame going in your own heart, in your own minds and so forth, as you move forward through life, and that you can maybe see some changes down the line here. And anything that you can do to influence federal government in some different directions will be greatly appreciated as well. So with that, I'm sorry, Mr. President, members of council, but I didn't mean to serverize here, but I think you know how much time and effort I've put into this. It's, I've got, if anyone, my files are totally open. I mean, I'm an open government guy. And anyone wants to come over and see them and so forth, it's there, and it's a big stack of stuff. It's all important stuff, and we've been trying a building block approach each step of the way because of what a lot of us know about this, unfortunately. And so it's been tough, but again, keep up your good work, keep your passion going, and I wish you all the very best of luck regardless of the outcome of this vote tomorrow. So, members of council, I don't know if you have any questions of me or...
You have also sought the opinion of a well-known environmental attorney who has worked for gas companies and argued before the Supreme Court.
Well, she's argued before the Supreme Court, and she's been kind of, I don't take anything away from our wonderful consul here because he's one of the most respected municipal attorneys in the state of Ohio. And he's been long-serving, 27, 28 years now, maybe even longer, right, Mike, there? But yes, I certainly have, and she is always practicing on a national basis, and she's, and I've turned to Maryland Hogan, there you know, and we're so lucky to have them in the community, although she divides her time between here and Tampa, Florida, and elsewhere, and Washington, and California, and so forth, because she's in route most of the time there. But she's a wonderful person. I've shared things with her, I've asked her for her counsel, and all pro bono, and it's been deeply appreciated.
And she has advised us that probably no amount of money would take us to a victory in court.
Unfortunately, right.
And she also said that the gas companies will simply take the fines if things go wrong. They'll take the fines, but continue working on because the fine money is nothing to the gas companies. $200,000, nothing, nothing.
Well, the Mayor Green told me the last check there, not only the fines, but what they're paying per square foot was something close to $300 a square foot, you know, or a foot, I should say, not a square foot, but a foot. It's just, you know, kind of, you know, obscene, really, in many respects, the amount of money that's involved. But we are one voice, maybe, of, you know, and we're trying as best I can. And the only other thing I just wish to say, and I don't, I hope it's not interpreted in a self-serving way at all because it really doesn't reflect me at all, it reflects you, it reflects your predecessors on council, it reflects previous administrations, it reflects our Independent Board of Public Utilities. You've heard me say, and I sound like a broken record on the thing, but we are at 41% sustainability right now. We depend heavily on, invested heavily on hydroelectric power and solar, and we now have the largest solar field of any community in the whole state of Ohio. We were the first to have wind turbines in this community. This is history, and it's good history, and it reflects in this best hometown, too, because, you know, there are no other communities. I know of one other that comes reasonably close, and you've heard me, and I've identified that community already, they're depending heavily on methane from their landfill, which is kind of a novel thing, but it's worked well for Oberlin. But other communities aren't even close to us. We've got people down here from Toledo arguing before Bowling Green to do something, and, you know, look at Toledo. You know, I don't want to get into a fight with Toledo, but they have, don't even come close to what we're doing here. And this is something that we as a community should all share in, in a manner of pride. It's just not, I hope it's not a false sense of pride, it's a pride, and it's also a challenge. How do we keep moving forward, step by step by step? How can we take it from 41% and get it up to 45 or higher, you know, and keep that moving forward? And that's going to require a total effort and a continuation of strong support from City Council and a belief in sustainability. And you all know, because you've received some of the same things I did, there are people among us in our community that, you know, don't think it's worth it, you know, to lessen our dependency on fossil fuels. And I have a hard time with that kind of reasoning, you know. So I hope we can keep it going. I hope with the university that we can keep it going and continue to build on it and not step back in any way at all, and try to do our level best here to enhance and increase sustainability.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there other questions for Mayor Edwards?
Excuse me, the mayor, we had an appointment that you needed to request this evening. I distributed it to the council prior to the meeting, so...
You have it before you're there?
It was an email they got on Friday.
Yeah.
An email.
Right.
Connie Weaver to the Transportation Advisory Committee.
I don't even have my notes here in front of me, but yes.
I'll move that we accept Connie Weaver to the Transportation Advisory Committee.
And I think it's largely people that are very much involved with the transportation program. She represents BGSU, right? Very good. Another one of our, you know, again, you talk about community participation and involvement. There are some, 20, 21 of these committees, commissions, boards, all citizen-directed. So making recommendations to me, to you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table for the mayor's appointment to the Transportation and Safety Board. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the appointment is approved as presented. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your impassioned comments and all your work on this effort, or on this issue. I know that you have worked very hard, and I think the council has supported your actions every step along the way, and I think that we all have unanimously been happy to do so. Certainly, you say very well, I think, or sum up very well, the feelings of many of us as it relates to this pipeline. Certainly, none of us would have wished for this to pass adjacent to our community. It's an issue that we, I think, all wish that we just would not have had to deal with. And certainly, the utmost consideration and concern has been given to the river crossing, and I do think that one of the most important things to come from this, and from your efforts, frankly, has been the assurances that we have received from Ohio EPA as to onsite monitoring of that process when that does happen. So again, thank you for your efforts, and we will certainly be diligent in watching that contractor as they approach that river.
Mr. President, I'd just like to thank the mayor also, as we've, you know, have many times in the meeting, for the many letters you wrote and the upcoming monitoring that we're being offered to do with the crossing. I'd also like to thank Brad and Lisa for their energy and bringing this to council, you know, repeatedly, and our new guest tonight. Just want to say thanks, you know, I really do appreciate the passion you guys bring to this. You know, and I think you've inspired us. I'm not sure, the easement vote might have even gone the way it did without your energy and knowledge. So just wanted to thank you guys.
Thank you. Our next report comes from our Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Good evening. A few quick reminders, city offices will be closed on Friday, that is in observation of Veterans Day. Of course, as always, even though our city offices are closed, we will have a lot of city employees working, our police and firefighters are always on duty, and we have people that are monitoring our plants, of course, our water and wastewater plants, as well as those who are always on call should an emergency arise here in town, which of course, we hope is not the case. We also have a couple upcoming events, and to mention to you that on Friday, is it November 17th? Is that the tree lighting? I forgot to look at my calendar before I got up here. Okay, our tree lighting will be on November 17th at the Public Library. In conjunction with that, we'll be closing Court Street between Main and City Parking Lot Number Four, and it's at 7:00 PM. Is that correct, Mary? The prelude is at 6:45, so come and hear the magical sing. It's a wonderful time, it's a wonderful community event, there'll be hot chocolate and donuts and all sorts of fun things to do out there, and it's just a great celebration of community. So we hope that you can join with us there on November 17th. And then the following morning is, of course, our parade, which will kick off at 10:00 AM. There will be several street closures, parking restrictions and so forth. I won't list all of those for you this evening because it's over a week away. However, you will get something in your e-news that will have all of those details, but be mindful that morning, of course, as you're moving about town, that it will be crowded. You may want to leave a little bit early, especially if you're dropping somebody off at the parade or planning to attend yourself, that will have a few slowdowns. And the last thing is that, actually, in conjunction with the previous presentation, we got for all of you one of the magazines with the best hometown from Bowling Green. And that completes my report. If you have questions.
Other questions for Lori?
Thanks.
Great. Thanks for the magazine, Lori, appreciate it. Happy to have it. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Good evening. I want to let you know I had a conference call with Camero's, our consultant from our Community Action Plan last week. They indicated they were very pleased with the feedback we got regarding the cap. They said it was feedback that was very reflective, very thorough. You know, we had some of the feedback be three or four pages, so they were really happy with that. They felt it was enough to help them edit the document, do some additions, and they are starting to work on that. They are also doing some research in some of the patterns and comments that they received. They also are hoping to get us something back towards the end of the year. They really wanted to work on an executive summary. They really took to heart the feedback that said it really was a lengthy document, and they really wanted some more of the priorities and projects to come out, be flushed out towards the beginning, so they thought the executive summary would help. That would be maybe four to five pages, so they will love to share that with us towards the end of the year. No solid timeline yet, except hopefully maybe mid-January, they're hoping for a presentation that's more formalized, once they get that final document back. So again, they were really happy that people didn't write just one word down, they were very thoughtful when they went through the document. Also, I would let you know, of course, feedback is always welcomed, and certainly as elected officials, you'll be talking to who you represent, and so any other feedback you get, please let us know. Also, I want to thank everybody that was involved with the peace march last Friday. That was a kickoff to Build the Best BG Month that is sponsored by Not in Our Town Bowling Green. We are one team, and it's on us. I also have a calendar of events, I don't know if you've saw this yet, for the month of November, which also includes our community events that were just mentioned, but there's some wonderful opportunities that are all free that I think you would all enjoy. I'm looking forward to attending some of them myself. So otherwise, if there's questions, please let me know.
Questions for Heather.
Previously, you thought that the comments were a little few in number, but as time went on, you looked closer, and there were more elaborate comments than maybe we thought at first.
Yes, definitely. And, you know, Camero's has been doing this for decades, so we certainly rely on their ability to do this type of work. They are the experts, and we really appreciate what they're working on for us. And we're, obviously, it's a big investment for us, so we definitely relying on their feedback.
Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley. Other questions for Kristen? We're going to let you off the hook tonight. Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh?
Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
Just a brief reminder that next Monday on the 13th at 5:00 in this room, we'll have a presentation of the 2018 Utilities Budget with our Board of Public Utilities, and of course, city council will welcome to attend. That's our regular board meeting night, so we won't have the typical board meeting, but we will have the information, the presentation for the budget for the utilities.
Will you be sending a written reminder on that?
Yes, oh yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem. That's all I've got.
Are there other questions for Brian? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
Well, it's early November, we're trying to get our roads finished up before the nasty weather sets in. Looks like we have a stretch of good weather coming, so we're going to try and finish getting North Grove concrete poured, West Evers, nearly all the concrete's done, South Church is looking pretty good, then we'll get the pavers back in to put the surface course asphalt on there and get those streets buttoned up. One update is Woodbridge started last week, Woodbridge Phase Four, so that makes Sue happy. The contractors cash services, getting the underground started, and hopefully the weather holds up for them to maybe get some of the road built yet this fall. And Leaf Collection started today. Just a reminder, people, when it, you know, all the rain yesterday was a good reminder of keeping leaves away from the curbs and the gutters and all that, to keep the water flowing where it needs to go. And just a reminder also that our first passes or so are just kind of what we call the grab and go method, so it's not going to be, we're going to get every single crumb, but the last pass, we will do a little more tidy, that's the way to keep the guys moving, because we no more get going, we get bogged down in a ward, and then the other wards are getting a little impatient, they're going so slow. So we're going to try the grab and go method again a little bit this year and move through as quickly as we can, and then tidy up on the last pass, which we've well announced where we're ready to do the last pass for Leaf Collection, so. That's my report, and there's any questions of me?
Brian, with pouring concrete, is there a temperature restrictions, limits?
There is with asphalt, concrete, we don't have one, we just have a stipulation, the contractor must protect it from freezing. What they can do, they can add additives to it, because concrete will generate heat just in the curing process for the first several days. But we use what we, right now, we're using what's called MS, a medium set concrete. It cures faster, a normal concrete curing, for regular concrete is 28 days. We're letting people get back on it within four or five days to drive on it by the faster pace of the cure. So it's a little bit more per cubic yard, but it turns the clock quicker to get that turned back around, so people can get back in the driveways and get moving. Because on the hills that getting this done, we're going to want to get there and pave the road, so we don't want all that concrete being what we call green, we want it to be set up and ready to roll. Yep, good question.
Thank you, Brian. Next on our agenda is the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
On the Finance Committee, I have a resolution transferring previously appropriated funds. I have a resolution authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a renewal of the agreement with the public defender. I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning December 31, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017. And I have an ordinance certifying unpaid cost of weed mowing to the county auditor for placement on the tax duplicate.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. President?
Mr. Zanfordino.
From the Transportation and Safety Committee, I have a resolution adopting the Bowling Green Fire Division Five-Year Strategic Plan.
Thank you, John. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Briefly, from the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee, we, council as a whole, has a welcome BG resolution and has created a welcome BG task force. And I bring this up now because there is the strong economic component of it, and people might have all kinds of different ideas and feelings about immigration and some of the tough issues involved, but from an economic standpoint, we learned a great deal from Steve Tobachman, who came down from Global Detroit, and we just have some opportunities to promote ourselves as friendly to people with great skills and people that can come to our committee, our community and provide a lot of leadership. And one statistic I'll throw out, and there's all kinds of statistics that'll become available, but one statistic is you put one immigrant in a STEM-type position, and that person will create two and a half jobs for other people who have lived here previously. But that was a great presentation, and I think it fits well into our planning goals, our economic goals, it fits well into our cap plan, and into our, some of the things we're going to be discussing about housing, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Bruce. Are there other council committee reports? Very good, we move on to the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading, Resolution Number 3682 for first reading. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to set the rules and give Resolution 3682 at second and third reading.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes, the rules are suspended for Resolution 3682.
Resolution Number 3682 for second and third reading, resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt Resolution 368.
Target.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes, Resolution 3682 is adopted.
Resolution Number 3683 for first reading, resolution authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a renewal of the agreement with the Wood County Public Defender. Resolution Number 3684 for first reading, resolution adopting the Bowling Green Fire Division Five-Year Strategic Plan. Ordinance Number 8641 for first reading, ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017.
President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to set the rules and give Ordinance 8641 second and third reading.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
The motion passes, the rules are suspended for Ordinance 8641.
Ordinance Number 8641 for second and third reading, ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017.
President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt Ordinance 861.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Rowland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
The motion passes, Ordinance 8641 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8642 for first reading, ordinance certifying unpaid cost of weed mowing to the county auditor for placement on the tax duplicate. Legislation for second reading, Ordinance Number 8633 for second reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.04 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio relative to pay scales for seasonal employees. Ordinance Number 8634 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a contract with the Bowling Green Convention and Visitors Bureau for the promotion and publicizing of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio to bring the patronage and business of cultural, educational, religious, professional, and sports organizations into the city for the benefit of the cities, citizens of the city and the business community. Ordinance Number 8635 for second reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 101.01 and 101.03 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding the hotel motel tax. Ordinance Number 8637 for second reading, ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio for 0.4683 acres of land located at the southwest corner of Clef Street and Manville Avenue, from S3 Planned Institutional to R2 Single Family Residential Zoning as requested by Habitat for Humanity of Wood County. Ordinance Number 8638 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for supplying annual inventory requirements, underground and overhead lines insurance, sale of scrap materials, and participation in the AMP joint purchasing program in 2018. Ordinance Number 8639 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into a contract or contracts for the removal of multi-tech treatment system and to upgrade the lime softening transfer pumps at the water treatment plant. Ordinance Number 8640 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to execute an agreement or agreements for the installation and maintenance of a wildlife habitat restoration area at 16520 Carter Road. Resolution Number 3680 for third reading, resolution adopting the Bowling Green Fire Division Standards of Cover for 2017.
Mr. President? Mr. Zanfordino.
I move that we adopt Resolution 3680.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes, Resolution 3680 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8632 for third reading, ordinance vacating approximately 90 feet of right-of-way adjacent to Betco Corporation on Newton Road and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 8632.
Second.
Excuse me, we, I think, first have to have a motion to apply the emergencies or the emergency clause.
Oh, thank you, sir. I move that we adopt the emergency clause for Ordinance 8632.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
The motion passes, the emergency clause is adopted for Ordinance 8632.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that now we adopt Ordinance 8632.
Second?
No, second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.